Good afternoon and welcome to our Hammond City Council Agenda Public Hearing. Road call please.
Johnny Blunt?
Here.
Jason Hood?
Here.
Bobby Martin?
Here.
Lamar Marshall?
Mike Williams?
Here.
Public hearing, number one, in order to abolish the position of Assistant Fire Chief, Loretta Severin, Chief John Thomas.
Good afternoon.
Mr. President, Chief Thomas and I are here. Chief Thomas is requesting that the position of Assistant Fire Chief be abolished. If you have any questions, we are here to entertain him more so than Chief Thomas.
Okay. Have you had any questions? I'll start. Why do you want to do this?
My main goal, this is like a two-step process, and the first step is to abolish that position, but as you can see on the agenda later on, we're actually creating another position to best fit that. The job has changed over the years to where it's more administrative duties now as the department's grown, the budget's grown and everything, where we need more administrative help, say, in the fire service, in the administration side than actually just an assistant chief. And what this does is by going to the administrative chief, that opens the door to more people have the eligibility to get it, basically I'm going to be looking for the most qualified person to bring to that. That's what civil service has moved to, education and training is going, basically that's the way the fire departments are moving now. And what I'm trying to do is move in that direction also to where all the firemen, and like I said, they have the ability to do it instead of just having the next person's succession in line that's just been there the longest. So I'm looking at opening the door so that more people have that capability or the opportunity to get into the administrative side.
Chief, so would this administrator also have authority over operations, fire operations, that type of thing?
No. We got three district chiefs that are very capable of doing that. They're there 24/7. There's a district chief on duty, so even at emergency operation scenes, even myself, I'm not at every one of them because of course, you know, evenings, nights, weekends, I mean, we're off. We come eventually, but to lay the groundwork, the district chiefs are calling all those shots, and that's where I'm pushing training and education even on them because they're the ones that are making those emergency calls to operations. They're the ones that are doing that, and you know, I said, I don't see any problem with that as far as...
Is there a hierarchy among district chiefs or does it depend on where the emergency is?
Each one, there's one per shift, so there's only one on duty.
So when district chief really, when they're on the ship, is if you're not...
Right.
On scene or they have the whole city?
Right. You know, whenever I'm not, even when I'm there, they still responding to the calls. They're in charge of the day-to-day, their shift as far as what, you know, who's working, who's not, allowing them to leave, you know, making sure that all the stations are covered, who's running the stations. The district chiefs are doing all that.
And they can make command decisions on the scene of a fire, emergency, whatever, in your absolute...
This person would be more supervision of managing, training, fire prevention, and the communications division, all except suppression.
I have a question, Mr. President. Chief, so the assistant chief position that we currently have, is that person no longer there?
Correct. The assistant chief that we did have retired April 1st.
So based on the current system, who would be up for that position?
The senior district chief.
And how long has that person been with the fire department?
Thirty-two years, thirty-two, thirty-three years.
So if this person's been waiting for 32 years to have a chance to have this position, and we're going to not allow that to potentially happen, what would your response be to that person?
It's like you're saying potentially happen, again, not...
But let's say it doesn't happen, so what would be the response to that person?
If over those 34 years, in the last few years, you know, what have they done, you know, have they moved forward and with their education and training, where they were at, or did they just, and I'm not, like I said, whether it's that person, whatever, you know, there shouldn't be an entitlement that automatically entitles someone to a position.
Wouldn't that be considered earned?
Well, the education and training to me is what, you know, what you're moving forward to is where you're going to get that opportunity to do that.
So what is the responsibility of the fire department to prepare the assistant chief for the job that you want, as well as the personnel department? What's the responsibility of the personnel department, the fire department, the chief? If we have a current system where that's the succession planning, what have we been doing as a fire department to ensure that our succession planning would do what it's supposed to do?
And I think that's what, we're trying to change that up a little bit to where we do have the administrative side, because it's a big jump going from fighting the fires to, you know, spending the budget or working with the budget.
So would that be a failure of the existing administration or... Not, I'm not talking about the administration of the city administration, I'm not talking about the mayor, I'm talking about the administration as far as the chief. Let me put it like this, let me put it this way. If I were the general manager and I had an assistant general manager, I would think that the general manager's responsibility would be to prepare the assistant general manager to become a general manager. Is that fair? So that's what I mean, so is that considered to be a failure if we haven't prepared that person to do that job?
I guess...
It's a philosophical question.
My thing is to where the classes are out there, opportunities are there, if they want to go to LSU and they take officer classes, there's officer certifications where they build up to that, that's where I go to that education and training. It's out there, it's available for them, but if they don't take advantage of that, that's where I'm, I guess I'm at. You know, I want to look at education and training and put the best qualified person in that position.
And if you're speaking about a development plan for those individuals, no, there has been no development plan...
That's what I was asking.
For those individuals in place.
Should it be?
Yes, I think it should be.
Okay.
And taking this step, we could move to that, having this administrative chief. We could develop along with human resources, of course, we're there to help them, but this person would be able to help institute some type of development plan for individuals so that they can move up, not only by seniority, but be prepared for the position that they're moving into. Even with district chiefs, even though it's a seniority-based position, you're preparing that person to take over that position. I mean, because you're talking about performance reviews, resolving conflict, you know, and that hasn't been the case, I could say that.
Okay, and that's what I wanted to know, so I was curious about.
Give us your name and...
Good evening, guys. My name is Ben Girard. I'm a former assistant fire chief with the city of Hammond, had 31 years in as a member of that department. I am the representative of local 2361, and I stand here and ask you to please, please, vote no on this abolishment of this position, and I'll answer some of the questions that you all asked. I came up through the ranks, I was a firefighter first, I was a captain second, I was a captain on the ship, I actually was in charge of the ship, I was a district chief, and I was assistant chief. The only position I couldn't make it to was the fire chief, and that position is an appointed position. All those other positions are, if you work, you stay there at the time, you take the test, you pass all your tests, you get the promotion. We just had a guy retire, went to his retirement party, there was five former assistant chiefs there. You know how many fire chiefs, retired fire chiefs was there? One. These guys come to work here and they work to climb the ladder, and you're going to take one of the steps, you're going to take one of those off the ladder. Those guys, the highest they're going to be able to get, majority of them is a district chief position. Now, let's get back to the qualifications. If that district chief is not qualified to be the assistant chief or to be the administrator, then who is? This guy rode fire trucks, this guy's doing payroll, he does the payroll now, he takes care of all the arguments that are there, he does everything. On a day-to-day basis, that district chief does everything. When he moves up to assistant chief, he has done everything that there is to do administratively. I can't see taking that position away out of a promotional position and making it an appointed position. It's not fair, this hasn't been a problem, Hammond Fire Department hasn't been a problem. We recognize statewide to have a good department, and I would hate to see something that was created years ago, under civil service created that, and for us today to take that away, I would hate to see that. My other point here is...
Stay one moment.
Okay. You want some questions?
No, some others might want to speak.
Oh, because I do have some other things.
Oh, well, go ahead, go ahead.
I question actually the authority of this, and the reason why I say that is that abolishing a position can be done through civil service rule. Abolishing a position can be done through civil service rule. You cannot abolish a class under civil service rule, and with only one person in that class that holds the position of assistant chief, by abolishing that position of assistant chief, then you are actually abolishing a classification, and that can only be done by the board, the civil service board. I have, I know everybody's going to get up here and talk, but I do have some case law and I do have some attorney general's opinion on that, so, and I would yield.
Mr. President, I would like to ask, I'm ready to answer that question if he's prepared to or can, as far as...
May I have your turn on this? We do have an expert, we knew this question was going to come up, and at this time, if the council would allow, I would like to call on Mark Wineski, who is an expert on this. He has been in contact with the civil service board, excuse me, the state examiner's office who does oversee this because we knew this question was going to come up. May we hear from Mark? Mark, if we could.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I'm Mark Wineski, I'm CEO of Personal Management Inc., and we specialize in fire services and have done that for a number of years. I don't have all the specifics of the history of the city of Hammond, but I am relatively the colonel in everything that's happening here. You're technically, you're the governing authority, so that means you can create all the rules, you're mayor's the appointed authority, so what happens at this level happens. I mean, you are the authority to create all this. Technically, what you're doing is you are abolishing the position of assistant chief. Civil service law states that if the principal duties of that position materially change, which Chief Thomas has said that they are materially changing, you have to change that classification. You have to make a change. You can't put a round peg in a square hole to make it very simple. So with the change in duties and responsibilities, you're required as the governing authority to recognize that change and act appropriately. You're not changing the overall services or fire services to the city of Hammond and the community of Hammond. What you're doing is you're abolishing a position and you're going to defund that position if that's the vote of the council. We also ask that you would create the position of assistant fire, I mean, excuse me, of a chief of administration. A chief of administration is the body of the duties that are more, fit the needs of that position today as compared to when the assistant chief was formed years and years ago. So again, you're following civil service law that says you have to change and make progress into compliance with the new duties and responsibilities. You have created a brand-new position called chief of administration, again upon the vote of the council, that is a competitive position, so every member today in the fire department can sit in that competitive seat and say, "I want to be selected as a candidate." So every one of your current district chiefs who may be in that succession line are not prevented from sitting in that seat saying, "I want to be a selected candidate," are considered a candidate for that position of chief of administration. The duties of that chief of administration are the future of fire services, and if you look at fire services, not only what's happening in Louisiana, but what's happening on a nationwide scale, assistant chief positions are being eliminated because most departments are moving to a chief of administration and/or a chief of operations or both of them combined based on the needs of that department. Chief Thomas has worked with OSCE, he's looked at this, OSCE has come out with a recommendation that says based on education and training, you must put the most qualified person in there. This whole protocol basically follows the state examiner's office recommendation. You are rising tantamount to removing a class when you defund this position again at your election and abolish it, but that falls back in a one-two step to the local civil service board. So your action as the governing authority sets precedent, and then the local civil service board will have to deal with that precedent, and the outcome would be they'd have to remove that class because you don't, you no longer have that position. However, by the creation of the chief of administration, you now have opened up a brand-new slot that any member in this department qualified can sit as an applicant for that spot and fulfill the new duties of that slot, which are the future duties of the fire services. So again, there's plenty of case law to support this, there's plenty of OSCE. I had a direct conversation with Mr. Lawrence yesterday on this matter, knowing that I may be asked to speak today, so again, I've spoken with him before noon yesterday, but the protocol that you're going through does meet the compliance with civil service law, it does meet the merits and intent of civil service law, and it does meet the future of fire services for Hammond and fire services in general. Any questions?
I have a question for him, Mr. President, and I understand the new position is a, as you said, it's a, at-will-hire position, so it's not a length of service requirement?
Well, it's a competitive position?
Competitive position was the terminology that you used, but it's not necessarily required to be a competitive position. It's just a choice of what we're, in this case, if that were to pass, choosing to do. We could take that same position and apply the same length of service or time with the organization as the requirement for that job as well.
You could set, absolutely, you could set baseline requirements.
So it's not necessarily, the only way it could be done, it's the way that you're recommending it be done, but it can still be a new position, but be based on length of service. Is that right?
Well...
Is that a true statement?
Partially, and I'm not trying to be combative or not...
I'm just trying to make sure that everyone understands what you were saying.
It's very common in a competitive position that you set requirements, and maybe you have to have 10 years of experience or 20 years of experience. You may require that they have certain certifications and educational background that would most qualify them for that position, just like they would have that possibly on the promotional side. The difference is, in a promotional system, you have to take your most senior member that passes the test that fits into that. Here, you take basically a competitive position. That most senior person would naturally qualify as a candidate, but it allows you to choose the best person for that slot for the future of the fire department. So you have the full right and authority to put any sets of conditions on there. Those conditions are actually requested, in fact, when a class plan, if a chief of administration is approved, you would actually do a questionnaire by the state examiner's office, and that questionnaire, you would actually set up the requirements for that chief's position as chief administration, and it may be years of service, certain degrees, certain training aspects, things of that nature.
And if you did that, then the people who are in line would know what the rules and engagement are, and then they could move towards that. The problem that I have with it is that, you know, you've been going along this way for so many years, and then all of a sudden you change, and in the middle of the game, and you're not giving the potential applicants a chance to even compete because the rules are changing in the middle of the game. So it seems to me like if you're going to change the rules, you have to give the person who is up for the job a chance to meet those new requirements before you just arbitrarily change it. That's just my opinion.
And please, I may stand corrected, I'm not fully vetted in the history of the department, but it's my understanding that this has not been an unknown event, that this has been a discussed event for some period of time.
I've known it for two weeks, I don't know, but anybody else?
General knock to the council.
Correct. I mean, in the fire department itself, it's been, it's not been an unknown event. The other thing is you have an unfilled position right now, so there's no disciplinary action against any member because the assistant chief's spot is actually vacant, as we said right now, due to retirement, I believe, correct? You know, so again, and change always happens in the middle of the road. Unfortunately, you never have a perfect spot to start and stop change, it always happens in the middle of the road, but again, based on the request of the fire chief and the future demands of the fire department, and really the future of fire services, this is the progression of fire services in general.
Can the governor answer questions? I want to direct this towards the chief. Just out of curiosity, have you discussed, and this may come up later on in the agenda, the criteria and the qualifications for the new position?
Right. What it is, right now, the state law says it has to, because it's still a test, it still could be a test, it's still civil service, so, you know, like I said, it's not where I can just choose anybody, and also, I believe it has to be even ratified by y'all, but the law says they have to have 10 years. Now, once we create the position, that's when we get that job analysis that civil office examiner has spelled out for us, that we fill that out and we create, and that's when we say that instead of 10 years, we want to up it to 20 years. What certifications, whether they need to be certified officer one, two, three, where they need to be, that's all in that design program. You don't come out right now, and like I said, this is the same thing we did two years ago with my training officer. We didn't do, it's not anything different, we did the same thing with the training officer at that time, but it's a lengthy process to put all those requirements, but it's, you have to answer the questions from the state examiner. They don't do that prior, you got to do it post-type, but then we'll actually appoint someone and, you know, ratify it at that point.
Let me ask you this, one more quick question, Mr. President. Do you know how many departments in the state are practicing this new position and abolishing the position by any chance?
I don't know about the abolishing. I don't know where they've changed. I do know that there's probably up to about, in this area itself, probably about six between Baton Rouge and Slidell, St. George...
That has a new position.
Have the new thing there, and basically they're going with that over, you know, an assistant chief at that level.
It's called administrative assistant chief, is that the title?
Chief of administration.
Chief of administration.
Because it's, again, it's just over the years that chief, the assistant chief's job has changed, and I know, like I said, you're changing rules, but we have to make a change somewhere. When I talked to you, office state examiner, prior to this, you know, within the year, they said, you know, the best time to do it is when you have not anyone in that position. And like I said, you have to make the change sooner or later, and I don't think we need to have, we're not that big of a department where I need to have the assistant chief and the chief of administration in there, and that's why I'm trying to combine them out.
So let me get one. Where did you want it? I just want to speak on behalf of the Hammond Fire Department. In my profession, I'm called out when they there, so I never seen no problem with, we're looking at probably 15, 20 guys running around, they work. The whole time I've sat in that truck and watched them and seeing how things go, I ain't seen no problem. You said Hammond Fire Department, they get out, I have used them several times personally, they're the first one on the scene, and I ain't never seen a problem in the department till now about this assistant chief.
You're right, and that's where those district chiefs, like I said, on the ground, everything is going great, it's the administrative side that is starting to need where the help. I mean, you know, we got 63 employees, you got a $5 million budget, we need to have some, the best qualified people to manage, you know, if you had a business itself, that's where we're at. The fires, oh, I'll put my guys up against all of them, and that's those district chiefs fighting the fire and doing the ground stuff there. It's now, we've done a lot more paperwork involved, reports that we have to submit, dealing with the budget, meeting the requirements of different things. The paperwork, the administrative side is where you don't see, that's what I'm saying, you don't see, that's not, that's a different side. You know, that's not the fire side, and I like said, I'll put our guys up against them, they're right, and that's why I said they are very capable of fighting fires and doing the day-to-day, you know, fire scene operations. That's not what this is about. You know, I'm talking, we're talking administrative, we're talking desk job that has to happen.
And then the pay raise going to be in this?
It's the same, it's really going to be the same as what the assistant chief, and that is, it's the same.
I guess I should be monitoring too.
Just a minute. Chief?
Oh, that's all.
We'll get to you, okay? As you notice here, that's a lot of concerns about this proposal, and you have some of your firemen who are worried because they feel unsafe, and of course, they want to be safe reference to this proposal, and I guess that's probably due to lack of information. They sense that their dreams are being shattered, that their belief in the system is weakening their morale, and that their career path is being blocked or compromised. So my question is, speaking from your heart, how do we eliminate the notion that there's no safety or security in the fire department if this proposal passes?
I guess when, I don't quite, the safety part, like I said, it's two different things. This would have no effect on the safety of out at the fire scenes and all that, if that's the safety we're referring to.
Well, not on the fire scene, but the positions of being a, the seniority.
Oh, it's still, you got to remember, this is all civil service still, and basically what we're doing is, instead of now, there's some people now have it figured out, that they know that there's no way they can ever make assistant chief, because they have one or two guys that got hired just a month or two ahead of them, so they already know, when they hire that, they can never make assistant chief because that other person is just right there above them. Now, they're looking at this door, that if someone works hard and goes and gets and, you know, wants to learn about the administrative side, learn more on computer stuff, the data management, budgets, administrative side, if they learn it, I just, really, like you said, I'm not, I'm giving more people the opportunity. You know, if we do this, even if I say we got to have 20 years' experience, instead of just one person, I just open it up to about 12 people that are eligible to get it. So I'm thinking that through my, I'm giving people the opportunity. Myself, I've come up through those ranks, I knew that I would never probably see assistant chief. I've been very fortunate to be able to jump up to the chief spot. That was something I worked for, you know, as far as trying to do and trying to train and learn that administrative side. It's a whole different, it's a business aspect at that point, you know, it's not, has nothing to do with putting out the fires. It's a business. You know, the city, the government itself is a business, I'm a sub-business of that. And now, on this side of the fence, I got to worry about more of those, the business side, than the, we got the firefighting down, our guys are good, I'll stand behind every one of them, but I just think now, I'm opening the door to, now people can see that if they work hard, there is somewhere to go. Otherwise, no matter how hard you work, you'll never get to that spot if there's just someone that's ahead of you type thing.
Just because of sheer time?
Just because of sheer time. Right now, it's solely, now I won't say solely, because it'd still take a civil service test, but it doesn't matter whether you get a 75 or you get 100 on it, it doesn't matter as long as you pass it, it goes by the senior person, whoever has the most time, you know, sitting at the fire station. That's where it goes, and I'm trying to open that up where people do see that opportunity instead of that closed, I'm opening a door.
And by the way, I want to commend you and your partners for the wonderful service that you provide for the citizens of Hammond.
Thank you.
Any others? We can get to you, not yet?
Good evening. I'm Terry McLeary, and I've been with the fire department for 28 years. I'm one of the senior captains, and I've looked at both sides of this as a firefighter, personal level and for the fire department. And what Chief Thomas is really trying to do is modernize the fire department, and not necessarily because you've been there 33, 35 years, that you're the most qualified person to be the second person in command. So you have to look at it that way. It's not just going to put anybody in a position, you have to have some requirements, and Mr. Marshall, I understand your concerns about, hey, did that person... And Mr. Marshall, I understand your concerns about, hey, did that person have the opportunity to go and get the education? So, not all of the fire department is a hundred percent for this. And I think that it would benefit the city of Hammond and the fire department to have the most qualified person in the position, other than just somebody that's been there and went through the ranks, understand the rank process. Probably in the long run, it'd hurt me, because that's one more position that I have, you know, if the promotion went through, another, it brought three people up. An operator will go to captain, captain go to district chief, and then the district chief will go to assistant chief, and that's kind of along the lines, I think, you, Mr. Mr. Warren, everything. So, that's, that's my take on it. Thank you.
Mr. President, I have one more question, if I can, to the chief. And this is just a question I have for Chief Thomas. So, and I heard in your conversation, you were saying that it was recommended that we do it when, you do this when there was a vacant job, it wasn't a requirement to do when it was a vacant, a vacant spot, right?
Because of the, the...
There was a recommendation, because it might make it simpler.
Correct.
So, this is just what I'm thinking. And I understand your perspective, and I think there's some, there's some logic to it, but I also see from the other side, because, you know, I've worked in an environment where, you know, our employees who work up through the ranks, you know, all they have to look forward to is that promotion. And, and I just, I kinda have a hard time looking at a guy who's been there for thirty-two years. That's a long time. And that's, thirty-two years is, is a long, that's three decades of working. And then, all of a sudden, now, you have a chance to get the job you've been waiting for for thirty-two years, and we're gonna make a change. I understand there always has to be a timeline when that happens, but trying to look at it from the standpoint of that, that person. So, why can't we say, going forward, when this next opportunity comes up for this position to become, then, this is, this is our new strategy going forward? So, now, all the people who are in the ranks are, know the rules of engagement, they know what's going on, and now they have a chance to prepare themselves for those, those deficits that they might have in their competency, so that they can be able to compete. But if you change the rules today, and we have all these new requirements that they haven't had a chance to even achieve, is that really fair to the existing rank and file who, who may now, now that they know, might have a different approach on how they, you know, how they navigate through this whole process? So, so if you had a chance to say, you know what, maybe we go this time, if we put the rule in place for the next time this happens, so it gives everybody a chance to prepare, would that be a compromise that you would consider?
I, I think that in two thousand and eleven, we did put out a requirements for promotions, and the assistant chief was listed at that point. And it even showed the certifications required for the assistant chief. Now, we staggered it. And the assistant chief position didn't go into effect as far as the requirements of the, till two thousand and fifteen, okay? That was the cap, the district chiefs was two thousand and fourteen, captains was two thousand and twelve. We did some staggering things, I don't have that in front of me.
Did you see what I'm saying? Why can't, why can't we say, why can't we say today, effective the next time this position becomes available, here are the rules of engagement, whether that's five years from now, or seven years from now, or two years from now, or three years from now, and then that gives everybody a chance to position themselves to be able to compete?
Well, my, my take on that is just I'm trying to move the department forward some now, and all we're doing is getting behind. If we wait three or four years, whatever it takes there. Like I said, I had the, the assistant chief stuff, and some of the ones now, like I said, people haven't even addressed these. You know, they were, they were given some opportunity there, but they haven't, they haven't even shown interest in moving with these requirements. So, I still think that it's, you know, trying to move into the next era, and still trying to get, and like I said, by making it's fine, is I'm just trying to get the best qualified person there. That's all I'm trying to do.
Any other comments?
Alex Gerard, I'm a training officer with the fire department, which Chief Thomas was referring to just now, was a plan that Chief Kalor put in place four or five years ago, basically to help promote education and certifications throughout the ranks. That way, when we got to this point, hopefully, it wouldn't be a big transition. I think we actually started working on that about the same time that y'all made the change that the next fire chief would have to have a college degree. I mean, as a city right now, we really don't have anybody in the fire department that's pursued a college degree to fill that gap. You know, there's two or three guys in the department, but our previous assistant chiefs, I can't think of any of them that ever had a college degree. So, at some point in time, I, I understand what you're getting at, you know, but at some point in time, I, I think that we do need to go ahead and make the move. You know, it may not be the best thing for everybody right now, but in general, you know, it's not quite as much of a shock as what's being made to sound to y'all by some of the guys. And I, that's all, that's all I'll say right now.
Let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
Am I correct in assuming that there are some who are probably qualified for this proposed position that you have in ranks now?
The new position, the fire chief is, uh...
Yeah.
There, there, there's some that's, uh, would definitely be qualified, you know, I hadn't seen everything. I've seen some samples of some different departments. Slidell, you know, has the position. There's a couple over in Baton Rouge that have the position, and, you know, I've seen samples, but I think it's gonna really be up to whoever he puts on a committee or himself of what the qualifications will be.
So, as a training officer, you see that, yes, we do have some who are...
We do have guys in the department that take advantage of education and training, and they get every certification and formal training that they can get. And the thirty-three years, I understand what Constable Marshall's saying, I mean, that counts as education too. You can't just say that thirty-three years doesn't count as, as a education. And I understand also, if it's not broke, don't fix it, but maybe it's not working as well as it could be, and as efficient as it could be. And I think that's kind of what Chief Thomas is wanting to do right now, is, you know, put us working up at a higher step than what we are now, you know? And instead of just staying on par with where we're at and being average, you know, I think we want to keep raising the bar of, and letting us people, people are looking at us, us looking around the state and getting ideas, you know, maybe people could look at us and say, well, that's how we need to start modeling our department, is the way they're doing it now.
Anyone else? Okay, come on up.
Man, thanks.
I hear about two minutes.
Oh, man. How much time do I have?
Two minutes.
Two minutes. Let me see how, how fast I can go through this. First question you need to ask is why the, the guy that would get this position right now is not qualified to be the assistant chief or the chief of administration? Also, this is a weakening of the fire department. This is not progression. You're taking a man off of the fire ground authority. When I was there and the fire chief was there, we made sure that him or me was always in this city or close by this city. If the fire chief leaves now, if you adopt this and he leaves town, he's gonna leave in charge a district chief. That district chief can be off. Guess who takes his spot? A captain. So, you know who would be in charge of this city? If he's out of town and the district chief is off as a captain on Hammond Fire Department, he could have as less as five, six years' experience. Let's leave that position. I do not oppose you making this other position. Let's move forward. If this position is gonna move you forward, then move it forward. Don't do damage to the Hammond Fire Department by doing away with a fire ground authority position. That position is a fire ground authority position. That guy, that assistant chief has authority on the fire ground to make the decisions that need to be made to protect all the residents in this city. This position that you're gonna do away with and then adopt that position, they have no authority on the fire ground whatsoever. All they do is administrative work. This city needs firefighters. That's how we move forward. Hire some more firefighters. Keep that fire ground authority where it needs to be, and move forward. If you want this other position, I do not oppose you adopting that other position. But dag gummit, let's do not, let's do not take away that assistant chief position. Please. Also, I do have plenty of law, and I have been with civil service for many a year. I can show you where you do not have the authority to abolish that position, because there's only one person in that position, and by you abolishing that one position, you're abolishing a class, and that is strictly against civil service law. And I have it all right here, if you have time.
Yes, sir.
Mason Foster, mayor of the city of Hammond, and, you know, my, my good friend Ben Gerard makes a good argument. He has represented the firefighters well. Uh, but I think that, that the, what we're asking to do is to improve the fire department by increasing the efficiency of the department. Now, there's nothing against, like you keep talking about the next person that's coming up, and, and I don't know whether or not he had aspirations to be assistant fire chief or not. I do know that he's in the drop right now, so he's not gonna be with the department very much longer. But I think that the whole concept of this is reducing the bureaucracy of this department. And, and to say that, that who's gonna be in charge, I'll tell you who's gonna be in charge. He's gonna be in charge. Times have changed. I was in Cozumel, Mexico, and I was getting texts about an issue that we had down here on Thomas Street. He's always gonna be in charge. Now, yes, we do have people that have been trained under him that do have the capabilities of going out and fighting fires as the fires come up, and I commend them. We do have some great officers, some great firefighters, but what I'm, what we're asking right now is to, let's bring the Hammond Fire Department into modern times. Thank you.
Can I say one more thing?
One more thing?
Well, President Gerard brought up about, you know, why the thirty-three-year man isn't qualified to be assistant chief or fire chief, and I'm not saying he is or isn't, that's gonna be a decision that Chief Thomas is gonna have to make. But in my opinion, I hope when I'm here thirty-three years, that I am the most qualified and the most senior. I don't think it should be a discussion that I've been here thirty-three years, but I don't have the qualifications. I should be given a position because I've been here thirty-three years. I would like to sit up here and make the argument that if I've been here thirty-three years, I'm gonna do everything I need to do to make sure that I am the most qualified and certified and educated person, so I'm doing the best job for the city of Hammond.
By the way, that, that you went awful.
Yeah. Let me, let me, let me just, let me just tell y'all this.
Thirty seconds.
I'm biased. I, I'm not biased in this whole thing, I'm a neutralistic big, I'm gone from there. So, I'm not sitting up here trying to tell you I need this job or that job. I'm, I'm just a neutral person here, that I see what's happening, and I beg you, I plead with you, please, if you want to make this other position, go right on ahead, but please do not take that fire ground authority position away from the Hammond Fire Department. Thank you.
May I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
You say you're not biased. What is your position? Who do you represent here?
I represent the local twenty-three sixty-one, which is ninety-nine percent of the Hammond Fire Department.
Thank you.
I'm representing them.
All right. Yes, sir.
Tony Strahan, captain Hammond Fire Department. I've been there twenty-six years. I've looked at both sides of the fence, and I understand Chief Thomas's argument and the union's argument. My position, just like Training Officer Gerard said, well, I've been there thirty-three years and should be most qualified and this and that. What happens if I am? I've been there thirty-three years, I have my qualification, but the chief, he doesn't like me. So, he said, okay, well, hm, well, I'm gonna appoint, and which is basically the same thing that they're doing right now, I'm gonna appoint somebody to take that position, which is whoever it may be. So, that's what I'm, that's my personal feeling, is that just because you're most qualified or this and that, doesn't guarantee that you're gonna get the job. It's if, if he likes you, if he doesn't like you. If he doesn't like you, guess what? You won't get it.
So, let me ask, let me ask him a question. What's your name again?
Tony Strahan.
So, so how do you think, you know, and that's a very valid point, so, so how do you think that changes the working environment at the fire department? If you, if, if all of a sudden now, it's a popularity contest, how does that change how you guys operate in your spirit of core and all that good stuff in your practice? I mean, in your fire department?
Well, it, that totally brings up a, a whole bunch of issues and things like that, because if you're not friends with someone, then guess what? You're not gonna get the job.
Maybe you're not golfing with the person, or fishing with the person.
Right. It, it really, it is really, it really, like Chief Gerard says, don't go away with the position, you know, with the assistant chief's position. If you want the administrative, make another position.
Another position.
And have, he can do his job, but then, just like y'all were questioning a while ago about, well, if the chief's out of town. I've been there twenty-six years, and I've seen the chief goes out of town, then the assistant chief takes over. Well, if the chief is out of town, I'm one of those, I'm one of the senior captains also, and everything. And there's nothing wrong with the captains, but I really think that you really need that position.
How long you been there?
Sir?
How long you been there?
Twenty-six years.
Twenty-six years?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks.
I, I would just like to say one thing. If, if you do create this position, this is a management-level position. All interviews for positions are done by a board, a group of individuals. For this position, we would probably bring in someone from the outside to assist. Of course, Chief Thomas will make the final decision with the mayor's approval, but it's, it's not gonna be just, you know, whereas, I don't like this person, because you're gonna consider the review of, the reviews of each member of that board and how they rated that person. So, it, there won't be any, you know, bias in that area. So, you know, because he mentioned this person, I don't like this person. He, he will make the recommendation, but there will be an interview board that conducts interviews for it.
Yes, sir. Just to address, one is like who's in charge. Those guys, like I said, they're already thirty years, and that's on fire scenes. When I'm at home at night, they still have to make decisions right then and there. And like the mayor says, with technology now, things have changed. They're there, like you said, even if it is a captain or district chief, those are the ones with thirty, twenty-seven, twenty-six years. They can run that fire scene that Constable Martin talks about, we got that. But what we're just trying to do here, we could, okay, if I wanna add the other position and leave that, is that the best for the citizens of Hammond and everything? I'm taxed with trying to bring the best, efficient administrative fire department that we can run. And the best way we can do that is try to save taxpayers' money by not adding the people in administration. If we need firefighters, that's where you can go. But administrat, I don't, like I said earlier, I don't wanna add another person to administration. I don't need, I just need one chief of administration.
Okay. Anyone else?
There were Amali Hammond firefighters. I'm a captain, I've been there twenty-seven years. As the system sits right now, if the assistant chief moves into that spot, the person that 's in that spot right now, there's a thing in civil service this probationary period, which is six months to a year. If the chief don't feel like he's doing up to par on reports or management or whatever it is, with the correct documentation and the civil service board's approval, he can demote that guy. So, I don't understand why we need a new position.
I, I have a question for you, just, um, so, how long have you been a firefighter?
Twenty-seven years.
So, if, if the chief's out of town, and the district chief's out of town, and you're, you, you obviously twenty, all those years experience.
I have been in charge of a shift.
So, you feel comfortable with that?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I just one quick question. Good afternoon. My name is Kennedy Reed. I've been with the Hammond Fire Department for over twenty-eight years, and, uh, I don't have a problem with Chief Thomas creating another position, but I would like for him to lead the assistant fire chief position intact, because that's a goal that I'm looking forward to. And, uh, by abolishing that, you know, that'll shadow my dream. I just wanted to share that with you all. Thank you.
Anyone else? Go in once. Okay. Thank y'all very much. And now, we are going to, okay, number two. We still on public hearing, number two.
Well, that's not quite as exciting.
You have enough.
An order to approve of annexation and initial zoning request to our M-3 Montage Family for 1.412 acre tract 1 and 10.88 acre tract 2, University Grand, located at 2400 North Morrison Boulevard. Request by Davis Companies in accordance with survey by Wayne J. Bodine Jr., RZ2014-3-1.
This is about Alvarez Nursery, if any of y'all are familiar with that, North Elm 51. It's in an area with some apartments already predominantly. It is 12.3 acres roughly, wanting to annex in and they're going to bring, it's 156 total units, 480 total beds. And from the presentation they presented us, it is top notch and extremely first class.
So I repeat that, how many units and beds?
It is 156 units and 480 beds.
And, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but, so once we annex them in, they have to play by the city's rules, unlike if they were not annexed in, they could...
Pretty much do what they want.
All bets off, like...
And, and from what they have submitted and working with us preliminarily to get stuff moving, they are extremely cooperative from what I've found in this group. They haven't batted an eye at providing anything from parking studies to grinder pumps on sewer treatment or pump station. So they have really done anything we have asked for.
And they could do this project without...
Right, without coming in. Thank you.
So, so are we annexing just that particular piece of property or is it going to be an area?
It's just that particular tract.
So are we going to jump, just, just for, just for understanding, are we going to be like jumping over to get that piece and, so it's going to be the closest part to our line?
Yes. The south, the south piece of property is...
It's contiguous.
It is, it is contiguous.
It has to be.
Yes, it does.
That's what I was wondering, okay, great, all right, thanks.
Planning Commission was unanimous in approval, so any other questions? Thank you, appreciate it, gentlemen.
And now, we're going to go into our regular session.
Johnny Blunt?
Here.
Jason Hood?
Here.
Bobby Martin?
Here.
Lamar Marshall?
Here.
Mike Williams?
Here.
Please stand, we will now pray by Bishop Samuel McHale.
Our Father and our God, we thank you for the opportunity to yet come again and to reason together for the betterment of this great city that you have so put in the hands of our dear honorable mayor and to these precious and honorable city council members. We ask that you will grant wisdom, that they might, oh God, as people present different issues and circumstances for the city to consider, that you will give them the wisdom to accept and to approve and to even to deny that which would not be good for the betterment of the revitalization of this city. I pray right now that you will continue to shine upon this city, upon the citizens, that everything we do might be acceptable in your sight. And we thank you for the wisdom that you're going to grant unto them and for the heart that they have for the citizens of this great city. And we thank you for this now, we pray in Christ's name, amen.
Amen. Ms. Lisa, will you honor us with the pledge of allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Are there any council reports? Mayor?
Captain Callie, health guard. Yes, sir. Several reports. First of all, want to call your attention to the sales tax report. We had a very good month, even though our sales tax collections were down 3.51%. If you look in your book, you might notice that last year in 2013, we were up 9.25%. So overall, we are over budget and I can send that report to the council, about a little over $900,000 in sales tax collections for the fiscal year. Tomorrow is our Cleanest City judging. We have had a lot of people that have worked, been working very diligently on getting our city clean, not just for the Cleanest City Contest, but on keeping it clean. I do want to thank Vic Couvion, who is here, and all of the people and keep Hammond beautiful, as well as the staff of the City of Hammond. We think we're ready. The judges, the judges will be here actually tonight, they may already be here. They may be driving around right now, which doesn't bother us because we, I think we've done a good job and we keep a clean city. The actual event will start tomorrow at 8 o'clock here in the council chambers. We will have a breakfast for the judges and the council is certainly welcome to come and, and they will have breakfast and then go do their judging and then move on to their next venue. But we're really excited about having them, this will be the, hopefully, the eighth straight year, eighth consecutive year that we have won Cleanest City, State Louisiana, for population 10,000 to 25,000. So, thank you very much for everybody who's done a... That's it, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor. And now, this is time we recognize, are there any new businesses in the city? Any new business? Seeing none, well, we move on. Approval of minutes.
Second.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Resolutions, none, old business, none, new business. Number one, a resolution accepting the property and casualty insurance proposal for insurance coverage for the period made on the 1st, 2014 through April 30th, 2015.
Good evening, council members, Mr. Mayor. I'm pleased to, if you have in front of you, I would gather that proposal for this year that I've gone over with, with Mayor Foster. My name is Don Steele, Speed Steel Insurance. Once again, this year, we've, we've bid out the insurance with several different carriers. We did get three quotations in. The best quotation we had for the package, which includes the general liability, automobile liability, public officials errors and omissions, law enforcement liability, came from One Beacon Insurance Company, A-rated. Workers' compensation, we had three bids. The best program, of course, came from Safety National Insurance Corporation. Airport liability, again, is with Old Republic Insurance Company, A-rated. We have bonds with Western Surety. CNA, American Casualty Company, is on the property. I might note that the property this year is up about $4.2 million in value. We've looked at a lot of the values that we haven't looked at in quite a few years, went over them with the mayor. Also, we had a couple of extra buildings that we added, the new police department and so forth. If you have any questions?
No questions.
Don, the premium is up slightly and why is the premium up slightly closer?
Okay. The, the package itself is actually down. The, the premium increases came from $4.2 million in increased property insurance coverage. The rate actually came down a little bit, but our values went up and thus the boiler and machinery follows that, which is all the equipment and buildings and so forth. It followed, it tracks the value. And the only other increase we, we incurred was in workers' compensation. We still have some older claims that caused some problems, plus in general, excess workers' compensation has gone up across the board.
Motion to approve, second.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Number two, a resolution to grant a waiver of the City of Hammond ordinance number 2323, city statute to veterans of foreign wars and authorize them to sell Buddy Poppies on the sidewalk at the US Post Office on May 23rd and 24th, 2014, from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM in recognition of the national prisoners of war and the Missing in Action Month. Judge, Judge Stern?
Motion, motion to approve, yeah. Motion to approve.
Johnny, Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number three, a resolution of the City of Hammond City Council supporting the creation of Tangi Academy, a charter school to be located in Hammond, Louisiana, servicing elementary school students as proposed by the Tangi Board Charter School Association Incorporated.
As you all know, we've been working on this project for almost four, well, it's been four years now. And as we go forward with our Bessie interview, that's going to be happening at the end of the month, we would, I don't know why we haven't been in front of you before, but we would love for the opportunity to have a resolution from our city. And so charter schools are open admission, public schools that have no fee, and they give a big chance for this community to have a direct voice and impact on public education. And of course, they don't, it, it's not a competing thing with the public, with the Tangi Parish school system, and it's not competing with our parochial schools. Charter schools are just another choice for parents. And, you know, in this great country of ours where choice is, is the way of American life, this is a perfect fit into our, our beliefs. And so I'd just like to also tell you that this is a non-binding agreement, so it doesn't hold you to anything. And I know you might have some questions about charter schools or you might not. Tony's here, he's our board president, and so, there we are.
I do have a few questions. Because I, I'll be the first to admit, I don't know a lot about charter schools, but I've had people kind of talking about theirs today and I've done some research. So a couple of questions I have. Charter schools, not your school in specific, get funds in the state for each child, I think called MFP?
MFP, right.
So, one of the, I guess, knocks that I saw on, potentially on charter schools, is that they don't necessarily have to accept all children, as do public schools do.
No, that's not true. Charter schools are bound by law to have open admissions. They have to do open admissions, they have to accept all children. And our school in particular has a very driven, we are, our board is very driven to have inclusion classrooms where we, we have people on our board that have been, that have been part of this project from the very beginning, that find it very important to have a, a natural population of special needs kids, especially also as well as gifted, I mean, just a variety. And you can't by law turn away anyone, and so when you, when you take applications, then you, then we will do a lottery if we fill up from, you know, if we have like 500 applications, then we go into a lottery and it is, we draw. That's how it works. Does that answer? And so, and you just can't, you, charter schools in the state are designed to have, to be open to all children, to access equitable, equitable education for all children, that's what it's about. Opportunity, equitable opportunities.
Is this considered, because I, again, I've been to read a little bit of research today, is this a for-profit or not?
We are nonprofit. There are, and that's the other thing that we know that is on the table, are some for-profit charter schools coming to Tangi Parish.
And that's one of my concerns, is that if we set a precedent, it's not, I, again, I don't know a lot about charter schools.
That's right.
And I don't know a lot, I, I know you and I know Tony and, but I don't know your board members and I don't know, I haven't read your charter, obviously, and so I don't, you accidentally endorse something and I've only known about this for one day, quite frankly. But I'm just a little concerned that we, we open a door, maybe the next one comes in and it is a for-profit from out of town, maybe out of state.
Okay.
We, we kind of set ourselves up to...
President.
Well, I just think...
Could you state anything for us, please?
Anthony Maskin. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Good point, Mike, but I think you have to deal with it on a case-by-case basis. Certainly, we are a homegrown, community-based nonprofit, made up of mainly parents and citizens here. We have some help from folks in other parishes who've done charter school development as well, but everyone here has the same approach and idea, which is a community-based school. Our, if we have our druthers, it would be within walking distance, so no one would have to bus. We'd have enough for people in the community to right, walk to the African-American Heritage and be in the school like we used to do when we were kids. But certainly, because it's, because we are a nonprofit and we are local, I think the council is free to say, on a case-by-case basis, we are, we can get behind this in a non-binding resolution versus we can't get behind a for-profit Florida company that's going to come in and take some of that MFP money and send it back to Florida. Everything we do is going to stay here, like I said, we're, we're local, we're homegrown, and we're excited about bringing some different educational opportunities to kids here using models that aren't currently being used in the public school system, like we're doing a, an arts-based, arts integration model. We're very excited about that because it lets kids have multiple pathways to learn by associating music and art forms with the education.
How many children will y'all be?
191.
Right, opening K through five, about 191. Any other? Thank you all, great time.
Mr. President, I just, you know, I, I haven't had a chance to, you know, I would love to have a chance to go to a, a board meeting and learn more, like Councilman Williams is saying, you know, we really, you know, have never been in a position where we've been having, having to endorse a, a school. And I just don't know if, if I know enough about the whole charter school initiative in the City of Hammond. I've heard about it, I've never been at a board meeting or been invited to come over to learn more about it, and I, I would think that, you know, it would be good for us as a, as, at least me as a councilman, to get a chance to learn more before I would, you know, offer an endorsement, you know, to, to, to a program. And just, just for the record, I know that my son attends Hammond Eastside Mini School, which is a public school, and it's an IB school that also has arts and as a matter of fact, they have a company. So there's a huge arts program infused into their learning at the, at that school. So, I mean, you made a point that the charter school would be providing something new that we necessarily don't have, but that is, we do have that, at least in that school and, and the city.
And Hammond Eastside is not arts integration, this is a completely different model.
And that might, that might be the point, the why it might be important for us to really learn more so that we know what we're endorsing or not endorsing.
Which young audiences is coming?
Okay, an option would be if y'all could attend our, we'll set a meeting to make available to y'all. If y'all want to learn more, we'll email you, drop off information and have y'all attend and perhaps, you know, reset this on the agenda, just because our first meeting is coming up on the 28th with Bessie, we would really like to be able to say that the council as well as a bunch of other profit and nonprofit companies are behind us here. So if that would make y'all feel better, we wouldn't have to...
So you're okay with resetting it at a later date?
As long as we can try and do it before the 28th, we'll have a problem with that. We'll make ourselves available to y'all.
20th?
20th.
What, what, what would help you make, what would help you feel more comfortable with making sure that you had, I mean, would come into a board meeting or, or coming and, or send, we could send you some materials on young audiences, our education partner, what would, what do you need so that you would feel really comfortable with this decision?
I think I would like some information on your curriculum, your board and your structure.
Can we send you the application? Can we send you the application?
Sure. Yeah. It has all of that.
Yeah.
Well, the same thing.
Okay.
And if I, I know Tony, I have a question, I'll give him a call, or you listen.
Okay, that's what we did, I wanted to send you all the application.
Well, with that in mind, Mr. President, that's appropriate, I'd move that we tabled a resolution to support the creation of the Tangi Academy, which is resolution number three on the agenda.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion to table approved.
Number four, a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign the reimbursable agreement with the FAA for the telephone lines and airport traffic control tower.
It's been a pleasure spending this evening with y'all. I'd like to tell you a little bit about this agreement. It's all the telephone lines that are being installed in the air traffic control tower. The FAA has this agreement that we will pay, the city pays a fee for, that covers the installation and materials for the phone lines, and the first two years of payment for the phone lines, and then they take over the payments from then on for the entire existence of that air traffic control tower. That's, it's kind of a, when it says reimbursable agreement, I think we're getting the money back, but in actuality, we pay for it and then they take it from us and we don't pay for it anymore after the two years service we agreed to. But the amount is like $10,900 or so, if you don't have it in front of you, it's under $11,000.
And it's coming into your budget?
Coming out of my operating budget.
That was going to be the question.
Unless y'all have some extra, you, okay.
Yeah.
But no, we did fund it in our operating budget, moved some money around from here, a little from here, a little from there, made enough to cover that amount, because it wasn't a planned expense for us this year. Any questions about it?
Make a motion approved.
Second.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved.
I do want to mention, it's not just like regular phone line either, it's the phone line that goes directly, contact directly to the New Orleans approach, and in emergency situations, it's just a ringmaster line that goes straight to them, things like that, not just a regular telephone line like the city could just put in. So, just to clarify.
Backline or something?
Correct, it's a backphone.
Number five, a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a letter of agreement with the Louisiana Army National Guard, authorizing them to use the frequencies for the radios in the air traffic control tower.
Again, we will be the sponsor for these frequencies in the tower, the radio frequencies listing us as the owner of the frequency. However, this agreement allows the Army National Guard to use them to control aircraft. They will have the responsibility of operating that. When you're on that frequency, they're the ones that are operating the tower and operating the frequency, even though we're the owners, so we have to have a letter of agreement with them for them to be responsible for them. I'll also require that they maintain the license as well to keep up with it, so it's up to date.
Motion to approve.
And that's zero cost.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Number six, a resolution to approve a budget change form 14-01, transferring $35,000 to lift station improvement fiscal year 2014, project 616-11302, and $45,000 to Fine Gill Sewer Rehab, funds from irrigation systems by annual overhaul, project 616-11404.
This is what the budget change form looks like. This is a resolution that we started doing six, seven years ago to track movements within a fund, which do not require an ordinance, but they do require approval. These are all sewer funds. The next item on the agenda is the award of contract on the lift station project we just took bids on. That requires a little additional funds in order for us to do some things on the east side of Hammond, and primarily to eliminate Station 51 in options. So there's a $35,000 and a $45,000 transfer. This is not a new appropriation, this is the use of $80,000, we already appropriated for an overhaul, Gary's people are doing the overhaul, and we'll reschedule that factory overhaul probably in the next three years, maybe one year after that. So this is a zero change in total dollars, and this is transferred 1616 project to another 1616 project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood? Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number seven, a resolution to ratify and award bids received April 11, 2014, a lift station improvement fiscal year 2014, project 616-11302.
Yes, we took bids a couple of weeks ago, we're asking that you award a project, I have met with Gary Nein, the mayor, about this project, and again, the project, we had an alternate bid which included laying a gravity sewer line that would allow us to tie in options to our sewer system without having a pump station. So that's what I call Pump Station 51. Without the cost, it's about $35,000 to do it, but we'll be eliminating pump station, no electric charges, no maintenance, it'll be much cleaner. Gary courses very much in favor of reducing his maintenance cost. So the recommendations that we award for the base bid plus add develop number one, the amount of $271,000, to the low bidder, the amount of $271,388.
Who's the award tee shot, which company?
Sorry, Lawson Banet Construction, Inc., is the low bidder, Hammond.
Second.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number eight, a resolution to acknowledge and prove the cost of and the completion of the emergency sewer repair on North Morrison Boulevard at an approximate cost of $78,000 a year.
Yes, this was a major sewer problem that we were made aware of, actually, the pipe had disintegrated under North Morrison Boulevard. We were made aware of it on the Tuesday before Good Friday, and I emailed the mayor, and he declared emergency. And the two expensive driving factors on this project was a hole under North Morrison Boulevard, a state highway, and the sewer was 16 feet deep, which creates even a bigger emergency that we had to get a contractor in right away to bust the road out and put in shoring to keep the thing from continuing to cave in, and then we had to repair the cavity and then put the road back to the state specs, which state specs are, in that situation, they required us to use what they call flow field to fill the guitar trench, which is the same cost of concrete. So, and after we did that, we also had to line, we put, got in such form to line 390 feet from one manhole to the next manhole to keep this from happening in this section again. So that was, and the project actually cost, I sent y'all a spreadsheet, $74,103, which was a little bit less, but it was a very expensive project. I moved money around in my budget to cover it in the operating budget so that there won't be any extra money, but it was an emergency situation.
Gary, do we know what caused it?
It's just, that is just age. I mean, that, my personal opinion, when they do a highway, they are to fund moving gravity sewer lines out of the roadway, that, they moved water lines out of the roadway, they'll cover the cost, but they won't cover the cost of moving a gravity sewer, which in my opinion, they're more dangerous than a water line, you know, if you leave them on the road.
So would it make sense that if we ever get in that situation again, that if they're not going to fund it, that we plan that into our strategy so that?
And we try to do that, when there's going to be a state project like that, we try to do that. I would suggest in the future, we probably need to TV Morrison Boulevard up and down and see if there are any other potential problems, because, you know, we can't see under the ground and we don't know that the problem, we become aware of the problem when...
It becomes a problem.
When Bill Hood told us there was a hole on the side of the road, we go up there, we think it's a storm drain, and then we get the line, TV, when they got, run the camera up in there, there's nothing in there, just a big hole in the road. So it becomes a real emergency. I think when the mayor first come and got in office, we had the same situation on East Mars, just before the Christmas parade, we had to reroute all the traffic, and it was a big situation. We had like, I don't know, 300 feet of road that we had to tear up and replace. So those things happen and they're all very expensive. We were very fortunate to have a local contractor, also, I wanted to come in, Lawson Banet, we called them and they're right, Johnny on the spot. Some towns don't have that option. I mean, if you don't have a guy that you can call, some of them just won't come flying when you need it. He was very, he was on the spot, we called him in two hours, yeah, he had his tracking machine moved in there and he was working on it. So we were fortunate in having to have a contractor that will do that, that can do that. At a fair price, I mean, he was very fair.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number nine, a resolution to authorize the purchase of a 100 kilowatt emergency generator for airport traffic control tower at a cost of $28,700 from Taylor Power Systems, the lowest bidder from RFP 14-18 through a grant from State DOTD. All right, it's Peters.
Good evening, and this is a generator for the airport traffic control tower area, and we bid it out, got six bidders in, and other bidders, the lowest responsible bidder was Taylor Power System, and that's being funded through a grant from the State Department of Transportation Development, so we bring it to the, to the council for approval to purchase through Taylor Power System.
President? Motion to approve.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Okay, number 11, a resolution to enter into contract with Nuttech USA, Inc., for ground densification on airport runway, taxiway, and fuel area for a total of $45,000, bid RFP number 14-16. One bid received. All right, it's Peters.
Thank you, and I would ask if we could amend, make an amendment to this proposal, to this request number 11, there were three areas in there, the airport taxiway, there was the runway, and the fuel area, and through miscommunication, she put in $45,000 for the entire project, when we were only bringing to this council meeting the runway location one for $12,500. So that's what we're asking, if we can amend the agenda and go from 45 to 12,500. He missed 10, I thought we were just going back up to 10.
Make a motion to amend the agenda, item number 11, to be $12,500 instead of $45,000.
Thank you.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved with amendments.
Make a motion to amend.
To amend, okay.
Make a motion to approve, item number 11.
Second.
Johnny Blunt?
He said aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number 10, a resolution to accept bid RFP 14-19 for $345,345.45 from the Edson Group for 17.01 acres of city-owned property located on Industry of Park Road and Shelton Drive, Hammond, Louisiana, Section 16, Township 6 South, Range 8 East. The Edson Group was the only bidder. Mr. Peters.
Thank you, and this is a resolution to accept this bid from the Edson Group, a property bid, went on our Hammond website, got several calls, only one bidder came for, and that was the Edson Group with the 345, 345.45 figure, and as in the appraisal report for that property there, in the, our appraisal report showed $345,000 even money, so we did make somewhat of a profit.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
Questions, is this airport property?
It was, I'm going to give you a long answer, it was originally airport property that had, it has to have approval by the FAA, we've gone through that approval process, and so it was surplus airport property that was, that we're allowed to sell. All of these proceeds, you may remember, we borrowed money from the general fund, we paid back for Joe.
And that's what I was going to ask you, that was going to, so that's a good job, because I know that just happened earlier this year, or maybe the latter part of last year.
Last year, yes, it was in October last year. And we had difficulty getting authority from the FAA for the final bid.
So do we know what that is going to be utilized for, do you know, is it going to be some type of a...
If you'll remember, the three, the money that was borrowed from the city was put into the airport tower project, so it's to pay...
No, I mean, the land, do you know what they're going to be?
I have no idea, I can tell you that it is restricted, they cannot have residential on it, and they, they're aware that those restrictions were in the bid documents.
So I was wondering, is it going to be some type of industrial...
But he owns 50 acres adjacent to it, so I assume it'll just be an addition to his 50 acres.
25 acres, okay, all right, thanks.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Number 12, a resolution, number one, approving the submission of an application to the Lake Country Train Basin Restoration Program for $106,306 in grant funds to purchase a remote monitoring and control system for the sewer lift stations. Number two, agreeing to a cash match of $57,300. And number three, authorizing the mayor to sign all grant-related documents, basically.
This would equip every one of our lift stations with remote monitoring, so that Gary and his staff from the 190 building could monitor what's going on at all the lift stations, anytime there's any outages, anytime there's any levels that are showing problems, so they would be able to go immediately to that lift station and correct the problem rather than having to go to each one physically. The match is coming from Gary's budget in the fall, in the next fiscal year, he's appropriating part of his, I think he's going to put it under capital projects, but that's where the match is coming.
Is that all our lift stations?
This will cover every one of the lift stations. It covers both the equipment that goes into the lift station and the software, computer software that goes on the computers in 190.
I'm just going to ask a small technical question, so by approving this, are we then preapproving a portion of the 2015 budget?
You are not, and that's why we did not specify in here where the match is, so that it's not holding anyone to that match. This is just... it's not holding anyone to that match. This is just to put in the grant application. So the only thing that you're approving tonight is that we would, we are permitted to submit the grant application. We have no idea whether we will get the grant application. We certainly hope so. We would probably hear about that closer to July timeframe.
I guess on your track record, you got a good chance.
We actually have used this grant to do the sewer evaluation survey of Old Hammond. We, we use this grant to do that, and then we're using this grant currently to purchase four backup generators for lift stations, so.
Motion to approve. Second.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number 13, a resolution, one, approving the submission of an application to the U.S. Department of Justice for $12,987 in grant funds to purchase bulletproof vests. Number two, agreeing to a cash match of $12,987. And three, authorizing the mayor to sign all grant-related documents.
This is a grant that we apply for each year. The Bulletproof Vest program is a federal program that will reimburse 50% of the cost of each vest or carrier that we purchase. Right now, this would be enough to purchase 27 vests at approximately $962 each, which covers both the vest and the carrier. We are on a five-year cycle of rotating, rotating our vests, which is the requirement, and all these would also follow the national standards that have been set forth for bulletproof vests.
Are we equipped with vests already for each member?
Yes. Every one of our, we actually have a little bit of bulletproof vest money left over right now that Avery, Sergeant Avery Roner is in charge of handling the bulletproof vests for our police department. And so anytime a new recruit comes out, they are automatically issued a bulletproof vest, and then we go through a four to five-year rotation. So everyone stays current with their vest. There's no one out there with a super old, falling-apart vest or, or anything like that.
What happens to those old vests?
In...
Destroyed.
In my, are they destroyed? Okay.
Lacy, do you know if the, the grant match money was how, police budget or the grant match fund?
He normally takes it out of village, police village.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved.
I'll just remind you two, I know we talked a lot about match tonight. Every time, these are just for the grant applications, and then we come with the contract, which you later approve, where we outline the match again. So we can have discussions about match actually twice.
And now, final adoption of orders. New business. Number one, final adoption of an ordinance to abolish the position of Assistant Fire Chief. All right, Severin Chief John Thomas.
I believe everything's all been said on that, and I just wish that you, you know, look at it from a business perspective or whatever to try to move the fire department forwards. Whatever y'all decide, I respect.
Make a motion approved.
Johnny Blunt?
Nope.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
No.
Lamar Marshall?
No.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion denied.
Number two, final adoption of an ordinance to approve of annexation and initial zoning request to Orion-3 multifamily for a 1.412 acre tract -1 and 10.18 acre tract -2 university grant located at 2400 North Morrison Boulevard, request by Davis Companies in accordance with survey by William J. Bodine, Jr., RZ 2014-3-1. Josh Dillon.
So move. Second.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Introductions of orders and set of public hearing. Number one, introduction of an ordinance to create the position of Chief of Administration as a competitive appointment within the fire department. All right, Severin Chief John Thomas.
Mr. President, based on the previous vote, I would like to ask that this introduction either be tabled or withdrawn.
Make a motion to withdraw, item number one, under introduction of public, public hearing.
Second.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion to remove approved.
Number two, introduction of an ordinance to accept a one-year maintenance bond, number 016056774, in the amount of $15,636 for water and sewer public improvement within a 15-foot utility service tube and 50-foot private access service tube requested by Chick Philly, Inc., located at 1925 Southwest Railroad Avenue, Zone C-H, SDF 2013-2-1. Josh.
This is for the maintenance for Chick Philly. It's late because the project wasn't technically 100% complete until they did the landscaping. Reason they postponed that was because at the time they completed construction to open, it was a bad time of year to plant. They got with Robert Morgan. They actually posted a performance bond ensuring that they would get it done. The landscaping's finished, the job is 100% complete, and this is now time to start the maintenance. They're eligible to start maintenance because they are complete. So this is to start the one-year maintenance for the utilities that were installed.
Motion to introduce?
Second.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved. Public hearing is set for May 20th, 2014.
Number three, introduction of an ordinance to set official holidays for the City of Hammond for the fiscal year 2014, 2015 for non-civil service employees as follows. And they are noted in the schedule.
So Mr. President asked the mayor a question, didn't he?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, is the reason that we say non-civil service is because civil service, we said holiday is different for civil service?
Just because Civil Service Board said so.
So, so we don't have to even worry about that?
Correct.
I understand, thanks.
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Public hearing is set for May 20th.